Some of them are yellow.
Hold on, hold on one second.
It depends on which category you get different colored pants.
You're up on this.
We're on, okay.
Okay, okay. Okay, let's see, um, let's start over on the. Listen, Friday afternoon, I attended the pre-law board meeting where we went over the draft agenda for April twenty first. Uh, John Matt attended the meeting via Zoom. After the meeting, I went on a tour of the jail, which I had not toured for several years. They really made improvements and especially technologically. Kitchen was really, they fixed that and then I checked all the epoxy floors that they put in, which are really easy to take care of, great, so. Uh, this weekend, lots of activities in the community. Uh, I did go over to the K State Gardens for a short time and then called it a day. Reviewing today's agenda and meeting documents. I did, did a little yard work, watered some things that needed to be watered, especially the asparagus, it's a little coming up.
Yeah.
Needed a little water.
Everything needs a little water, I think, right? Quite honestly.
And then Sunday I went to church, uh, then to lunch, uh, with my lunch bunch friends and then spent some time catching up around the house and yard. And making some calls. That's it for me.
Well, I had like quiet time from business, tried to set up a couple of meetings Friday and picked the days that everybody was gone that day. We've planned a little farther ahead, I guess, instead of just an hour ahead. And, uh, I kept busy around the house at the first, first mowing of the year. That's always fun.
Were any of them really fun?
Yeah, I can take your. That's all I've got.
Great for business commissioners. First item has Riley County Employee Action Form, James House, Public Works Operator Two, Public Works Department Separation Service, Perry Stevenson, New Hire Building Maintenance Tech Two, Public Works Department. Uh, we're going to celebrate that one. It's been a.
Holy cow.
I know.
Let's all three please sign.
I know, I'm excited to hear that.
Where's the cake and ice cream?
Yeah, John and his team are excited.
Yeah.
Oh, that's why John, that's why John was on Friday. He was out.
Should have after that one.
He's a great candidate, lots of great.
How long is it taking? Catherine just asked.
I want to say six months, but it.
I think it was longer than that.
Yeah, we, we had to re, I mean, I'd, I, you know, we tried to focus on the, the negatives, but I, I could go look, but it was a long time.
Yeah.
The same.
Too long.
Way too long.
It's just so critical for all the buildings and facilities and it's been entirely missed.
And this is the one you guys approved of rewrite, so we had to, you know, what, oh, is, and we had a two and this generally is very qualified for two.
Right?
A great experience to step right in.
Good for Johnny. Did you have a?
No, a name sounds familiar.
Yeah. Steven Stevenson. That's what I think, Steve, a neighborhood eating air with Stephen, but that's, he's retired now, but then that isn't his son's names.
Well, he's worked for years in, I mean, he's from Manhattan there. I'm not sure he lives in Manhattan, but he's been working.
They might be related.
Uh, any changes of the minutes, minutes, Commissioner?
Um, go ahead and make a motion. We approve the minutes as written from the, uh, Thursday, April tenth meeting in the Riley County Commission.
I would second that.
And Newton seconded to approve the minutes of the, uh, April tenth meeting as presented, all in favor.
Ten minutes of agenda is okay, Commissioners? Any items for next week's press conference? Next time up Commissioners at nine o'clock. Break.
Guess we're caught up here after.
Well, yeah, we didn't have, that's, and your thing, I've had, I'd say a problem when I thought, I've been in every prison, every prison in Leavenworth County.
Gotta watch how you say that.
Gotta have to watch how you say that.
Construction project.
Boy, I haven't even had a speeding ticket for years, so.
You just.
And my license number.
I had a speeding ticket two weeks ago.
I'll tell you the, uh.
You just don't heed advice very well, do you? No, I don't, just slowing down, that's right.
Cruise control helps with that.
Yeah, it does.
Yeah, because it's really easy when you're on a highway, just. If I don't have my cruise on, I'm like. Go too fast, I'm not going to say.
In, in my defense, I had my crew set for the previous speed limit, which was like ten miles an hour higher, and so that's kind of.
That's what ended.
Yeah.
I bet the asparagus were doing pretty good when I was there on Friday, so. He's had a asparagus patch for decades.
I've been giving mine away already. Actually, I can't even. Turn into the asparagus.
Well, Friday was a nice day. Just spent a lot of time outside and it was a nice Friday. Warm, but before it got really hot, you know, and so it was enjoyable.
I was mowing yesterday. I thought I probably should have done it later. It was supposed to be cooler this afternoon, but something will happen. I better, better get it done.
I'm not working on front pastures and clearing up and then moving tremendously too heavy of oak logs for splitting wood. And he got dinged up, muscle in his leg, ankle still going, but. So he was down, so then, um, uh, uh, doing other things. I was thinking about going and brush hogging around all my fields. I'd like to do that, keep the saplings down. But it was so windy, I knew what would happen with that brush hog. You just get covered with that thing, so wait for a calmer and hopefully moisture day to do that.
I think we have any non-windy days right now, it seems.
It is going to be a windy summer, I think. Brush hogs already, so practice running good now.
So what's happened to the April showers then?
Yeah, I'm hoping they start Wednesday. Hey, uh, that four point six inch rain that we got came down so hard on top, I might have had to rip their clearing the most we burned before too and lighting some wood piles on fire, but. You could see up there at the top of the hills where it came down so hard to where debris was. You know, flooding up there and how debris was stacked up in different areas because it just came down so hard.
That's what I had, jumped in my back, want to save me, freaked me out. This is the very, very back when we artists look, then it kind of has a little step up before it gets to the. Building structures and stuff, but this is a lower spot and every, you know, once every few years it. That's out.
And when you had some in our driveway, some of those tumbled lime, limestone blocks are probably about five inches thick, you know, to outline an area where Darnell has flowers and I'd never seen it before, but it got up high enough over there and it's above the driveway about. Three, four inches where the debris went over the top of that and it's a fairly flat area, you know, and that really told you just something. When it down from my exit, you see this, this is never happened.
I had, uh, I have a couple of trees that we left along the creek line and that's where all these, two great big tree trunks stuck in there. I don't want to do them.
Yeah, those can cause problems. You start erosion around it and stuff.
Yeah, I know, and it's got rocks below it and they're already, you know, I don't know who's responsible for that because it's, it's the only creek is on by the city of this, so I don't know if they. Call them, I guess.
Other nature, not going to be here, that's for sure.
I had a chainsaw before I go out there.
I don't advise that. Wouldn't be talking about shovel and snow, remember?
Catherine, if you need someone with a chainsaw, my husband loves to cut things.
Oh, well, have him come over. I'd like to cut those big logs into small pieces and just let them go down the creek, you know, like everybody else does.
Well, he could cut them and take them home. Yeah, I was gonna say, he might not throw them down.
Be better because next time we have another twenty nineteen, those logs kind of help fill up the creek pretty fast.
I mean, he would love to. My son and husband do that all the time and they have a little wood ladder.
Have him come over anytime.
Okay, I'll have him, I'll have him text you.
Yeah, I'll do that because, yeah, because there's a couple of big ones. I mean, they make some nice fireworks or whatever.
I'd hate to see you with it, you or me, honestly, with a chainsaw out there like going to town.
No, I'd probably catch a whole lot of trouble.
Yeah.
I thought it doesn't want me to mow, let alone do it.
That's what, a couple of years ago, we had an apple tree that had died. This guy down the street that does a lot of smoking, you know.
Mm-hmm, that, that's what I do with my free trees that die.
He come down and had, you want some apple wood? Oh, yeah, he said, you know, he came down clean and I was just thinking he'd take the big stuff and I'd help, but he pulled off the little stuff just to get to the.
Yeah, the little stuff's perfect because you cut it in little chunks and put it in your smoker. That's what I did yesterday. It's the cherry tree that I had cut down that bars had died.
It's good.
And those ribs were good. You ready, Commissioners?
Yeah.
Good morning, Commissioners. Rich Vargriley County Clerk. First report to twenty twenty five year to dayages, year to date, wages and overtime compared to budget report. Upper right hand corner, you see at twenty five percent point in time of the year. That's just what we use the barometer to compare financially where departments are within their budgets. See, everyone's doing pretty good. We have the one there a little bit. A couple a little bit high in community corrections. Uh, always like to look at overtime, uh, overtime's not too bad at this point, you know, overall in the county. Uh, one point four percent. Uh, of course, remember, uh, noxious weed and public works all have. Higher amounts of overtime budgeted just due to the nature of their business, especially even this time of the year with building roads, but also when we have flooding or, uh, snow type issues like we have had snow this past year. So that'll be interesting to see how that works out in the budget with using so much of that early. You generally don't like to use all that early, so. Depending on how next winter starts out or, you know, this spring's flood, so it's always something to keep an eye on. Any questions on that first report, Commissioners? Next report's just a little bit more detailed breakdown of those respective, uh, wage and salary reports. Show, to show you regular salaries, seasonal and overtime per, uh, department. Any questions on that, Commissioners?
Yeah, that, um, on the top column, it says year to date twenty twenty four. Is that supposed to be twenty twenty five?
It is.
Where am I at here?
Right there, it says next to the left of the twenty twenty five on the top, very top line.
Oh, yeah, I see that.
Yeah.
They got the far right column right to twenty twenty five, but yeah, yeah, we can get that correct. Good catch. Thank you. Yep. That's the thing when you go from one year to the next is finding all the correct places to change.
Oh, yeah, because I could tell it was in the first quarter, but.
Gets me every time. Every time.
That's a lot.
Uh, next, uh, report twenty twenty five year to date budget activity and, uh, we need to get that, we'll get that percent fixed up there in the upper right hand corner too. It should be twenty five percent point in time of the year. Uh, you can see those that are highlighted in the blue that are over that at this point in time. Remember all of those on the first page, Commissioners are all under the county general, so it's only. Any concern budgetary of the entire, overall, uh, the entire budget of the county generals over, uh, towards the end of the year, but also within the respective departments, we like to keep those in there. Uh, all of these are due to timings of payment and should balance out by the end of the year with juvenile detention and budget appropriations. I always like to point out, uh, be three lines down from the budget appropriations, county general, general. Atypically low at eleven point six four percent. Remember that's where we keep the budget stabilization funding, so that should be atypically low. Any questions on that first page, Commissioners? Uh, next page, uh, you'll see, uh, KDOC juvenile reinvestment, economic development, of course, that's where a lot of appropriations get paid out of, so that's no big surprise in RCPD operations, of course, because of appropriations. And the, uh, KDOC juvenile reinvestment is just minorly over, so any questions on that page, Commissioners? Next page is all enterprise funds. Those are funds, uh, that get their monies from people that own property or live in those, uh, areas. Uh, no general ad born tax dollars are used in these and everyone seems to be doing good at this point in time. Any questions on those, Commissioners? Next report's, uh, a little more detailed breakdown comparison between twenty four and twenty five, uh, just kind of gives you a snapshot comparatively.
Formulas messed up on that. Looks well, like a registered deed, it says the difference is bigger than either one of the other two.
Let me see here.
There's a difference seventy two, the thirty eight forty three and the difference is seventy two thousand.
Saying right there.
County Commissioners, need, pressure, emergency, there's a whole string up in there that, in the middle that.
Yeah, right there, starting right there.
Well, on boat on the, and also on march difference and year. Formula's got. Stir that somewhere.
It happens transferring every year. How you doing? Uh, every year, just like dates. That's always the real chick tricky thing when we're doing a really big thing like the budget spreadsheets, the formulas. They can, they can get you, kind of like tech, well, is part of technology, I guess. So we'll get those fixed. Any other questions on this report, Commissioners? Just good snapshot. It's not always an apples to apples comparison, uh, always like to remind people because not all years it's same, and especially with elections, it's really not a good comparison. Because of the election cycles. Twenty twenty five year to date budget activity report, uh, the personnel item, line, line item on this, I like to remind Commissioners, no personnel and in the public, no. Personnel get paid directly out of this for work done. It's for separation of service pay. Uh, like to point out budget stabilization, four point two five million. Uh, that is why this, uh, department is atypically low on that first page, uh, really don't want to use those funds because if we do, we've generally had some type of. Uh, disaster to where we're going to have to help people out in our community. Good to have, trust me, we didn't have it for the ninety three flood because I was here and it put us in quite a situation. Any questions on that page, Commissioners?
Yep, that's one, yeah, an engine attorney. I knew we had new con, did we not have this? I don't think we even had, we not had the new contracts when we set the budget last year, because I knew.
Correct, so we didn't have the new budgets yet, but we, uh, or sorry, the new contracts, but we use them, um, we use the budget numbers to kind of project where we were going to be. Um, and so there's a lot of, um, there was still some crossover between the off panel and the engine attorney, and so that's why.
I figured it's the news. It took a while to get it settled down, so we're probably going to overrun there.
Yes, we are, and if, uh, Rich, can you scroll down just a little? Because there is a, the section, and I mean, for off panel, because we're still paying quite a bit of off panel expenditures as well, and so that's.
Not getting the bills.
Yeah, they're continually turning them in, and so, uh.
I didn't see, I didn't notice that line, but yeah.
Yeah, monthly, Michelle, uh, um, is sending the reports to myself, um, Rich and Bryant, so we can all kind of keep an eye on that line.
Always a tricky one to budget for, and especially before when we didn't have contracts. Now we have contracts, but as Whitney said, even though we have contracts, we're still using a fair amount of off panel, so that increases our cost, and so. Uh, that'll be one thing to kind of see how the new panel operates and to help us budget a little more clearly.
Yeah, hopefully that gets more consistent.
Let's hope, let's hope that that one thing.
Not counting on it.
One thing that's been consistent about the engine attorney, uh, defense panel and system around here is inconsistency, so. Uh, next Commissioner, twenty twenty five year to date, uh, budget report on expenses paid by Riley County, uh, on behalf of the. Law enforcement center, like to remind the public and Commissioners that. All facilities and anything, uh, medically related to inmates, Riley County covers one hundred percent with no assistance from any other public entity. So that, uh, the people need to be aware of that. I like this next report a little bit better. It gives you a snapshot comparatively from twenty one to twenty five where we sit, sit expenditure wise. Unfortunately, I have to point out the physician fees once again. You can see what they were in twenty twenty four, uh. We may exceed that rather easily in twenty twenty five. At this rate, we will see, uh, of course, multiple reasons for that, oh, because we know a lot of psychotropic drugs anymore are used. And prescribed, those are very costly and you add that with a sheer number of inmates. And then unfortunately, no matter what medical situation comes up with that clientele, we are by statute obligated to cover it. We do our best to budget it year in and year out. But whether we budget it or not does not legally allow us from not paying it, so, uh, we keep you abreast on that, uh, do the best that we can. Um, also like to keep an eye on building maintenance, building maintenance. Last couple of years, knock on wood, has not been too bad. That one can go up rather quickly too at times, uh, with such a large facility.
When, when I had that tour, the prescriptions, remember he came in with the new thing of individual packets and Mark saying that was. Working real well and we had an officer, actually it was Brenda's husband, was, was correctional, he was saying, oh, Mark said, yeah, it's working good. He said, more than that, he said, oh, it makes it so much better. And cuts down their time and it makes it real consistent with that new prescription plan. He said, and Mark said, it isn't saving anymore. He wasn't sure. It didn't save the money on the cost of prescriptions, but it's making it so much easier on staff.
Yeah. Yep, that's good. That's great. And we also got them additional nursing staff this year.
Yeah.
What everyone needs to remember, I know you guys do, but the public is, that's an additional cost Riley County bears. City doesn't contribute to those, uh, costs. We bear all of that cost. On behalf of the taxpayers. Any questions on that page, Commissioners? Next report, offsite inmate, medical expenses paid by advanced correctional, uh, here's a little detail on it. Um, inmate population, hundred and twenty four. That's something to always keep an eye on. It seems to be holding steady or going up just a little bit incrementally right in that area. And of course, you know, just based on. Uh, the types of inmates they're getting from time to time, we are having to use offsite inmate housing and that's an additional cost as well. And the thing is, I mean, that's an additional cost, but just think at the time that it cost RCPD too as well.
To take them out and bring them, yeah.
So it, it is a costly situation, no doubt about it. Any questions on any of those reports, Commissioners?
This is still not showing any savings from Medicaid. Are, are we not covered or are these people, people that are getting these services not getting any Medicaid?
They don't provide that information on the reports anymore, um, and so. I, I don't know. I, I can ask, um, ACH if, if they can provide us that, but I don't know if they can anymore.
Yeah, they can. We had to ask them before. They get, they get kind of lax on that from time to time and we have to ask them on that, but they can get that.
Look a lot better, I would say, than which I was supposed to.
And I think the Commissioners know the story on that, but it was Commissioner Mike Kearns that took that to the legislature to propose that, uh, inmates could get that. It started here in Riley County, that inmates. Uh, could pay the Medicaid rate, uh, when they're in local facilities. So that was actually Commissioner Mike Kearns. They've got that going at the state legislature for all counties to be able to take advantage of that.
Yeah, that should help that expense, I would think.
Oh, yeah, for sure it does, and I'm sure they're using it. They always have. We're using the same vendor, ACH. Any other questions, Commissioners? Take more time to go through those reports. Have any other additional questions? Let us know. We'll be glad to, uh, get the answer for you. Next question, she has Lori Harrison at nine fifteen.
No, it was in my box, somebody. No, yeah, she, well, I came in and put some stuff, I did. And evidently it wasn't laying, it lay on top, so I went to open. So they're not in order. They're flying all over, so.
In my box, I want, how many did I get this? Yeah, no, in Seattle.
Yeah, I didn't know, but, and she was, and, because Cindy came over, she was looking through the list, said, I think maybe that's your.
No, only me.
Didn't know what, but like I said, it wasn't in order. Open the lid and it went flying all over the place.
I just put it in recycle. Well, I've already got that.
It's all the.
That was at RFP for the church or something.
Yeah, it was the environmental study, yeah. Nine fourteen for three minutes.
Isn't that amazing how that works?
There we go. Go ahead, Lori.
All right, good morning. Uh, here to ask for an out of state travel request. Have a staff member, Robert Cox, who is working on his master's, um, exercise practitioner certification. And in order for that to happen, there's a class that is held at EMI in Maryland, and so we're asking for, um. Travel authorization for Robert to go to Maryland the beginning of May and he will. He is buying the ticket and then being reimbursed by FEMA for the air flight. The, um, institute provides lodging and then so all we're asking for is, um. Authorization for the travel and the three hundred dollar meal ticket, uh, for Robert, so if you have any other questions about his travel, be glad to answer them.
Four days, meals for four days.
And, and they, and they kind of got you because if you don't buy the meal ticket, they revoke your lodging and so, uh, so there's your, you know. You, you pay three hundred or.
Stay here to do it.
Or now you pay for lodging and meals, so, um, we're, we're coming out better.
Interesting, never heard of that.
Yeah, that's something.
Interesting.
Because they have the on campus lodging that they provide, yeah.
It's not like having to pay for a hotel and.
Yeah, you got any motion, Commissioners?
Okay, I'd make, um, let me see. Make a motion to approve the out of state travel request and meal reimbursement for Robert Cox to attend the Emergency Management Institute in Maryland, uh, May fifth through the eighth, twenty twenty five.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to approve out of state travel request and meal reimbursement for Robert Cox to attend, uh, Emergency Management Institute in Maryland, May fifth through eighth, all in favor?
I, sure, please sign. Thanks, Lori.
Thank you very much.
Keep us safe this week, Lori. Keep us safe this week with the weather.
Try.
Thank you.
Hey, Vivian, you got a minute?
Hey Vivian, you got a minute?
They had, of course, lived back home from Canopla, it's a real small town, you know, it's like two, three hundred maybe. Last time, have a new house built and it's probably had a couple, but it's a real small town. Where I'm from, and, uh, of course there, you know, no big cities around or anything, so they got them one of those. Uh, high price UTVs to drive around in the summer, because they like to drive around, but then the air conditioning, so. Man's want to buy a second truck as much as the main cost and as big as it is, because it's not the medium size, it's the big one, it's just as big as a truck. That's a new toy, you know, it's got heat and air conditioning, you know. It's all indoors, has electric windows, you know.
Don't you tell the guys in Riley, they, they, we've got one, but it's just a basic one, just.
You have one?
The, no, the city of Riley.
Oh dude.
Yeah, it's just.
Yeah, they come at all different levels, my wife thinks we have to have one. But I guarantee if we get one, it's not going to be that thing cost, because it's cost more than a lot of cars.
Several people in town that have.
Yeah, his wife loves to drive around in the summertime, but, uh, because of. Medical issues, the heat bothers her really bad, so they had to have air conditioning.
I didn't know you get those air conditioners.
Oh yeah, yeah, I like I say, it's just a truck basically, the thing's just as big.
Hi, how are you? Good on you, good on you.
Good morning, Commissioner Elizabeth Ward, Human Resources and Vivian Laba, Public Information Officer. Uh, and we're here again this year to talk to you about the NACO, um, High Performance Leadership Academy and the Flint Hills. Uh, Regional Leadership Program and, excuse me, as you recall, I'm sure. I've been participating in both of these programs, uh, this will be the third year for NACO and we've been participating in, as a sponsor of Flint Hills. Regional Leadership for many years.
Uh, for the past three years, I believe.
Okay, alright, I was thinking.
I think we did for a while and then we didn't for a while.
Yeah, I thought we were involved previously, but.
They didn't have sponsorships previously, we became a sponsor when they asked to do that, but we've had staff. Yeah, myself gone to attended Flint Hills Leadership for decades by now, decades.
And I should clarify, we have had staff in the past go to NACO as well, but we've been consistently presenting them and requesting for it, this will be the third year, so. Um, NACO is a twelve week online program and they do meet in small groups, so it's not just add on your own, they meet in a set time period. Um, and the Flint Hills Leadership, gosh, I'm sorry, I, I apparently got a little something going on. Is a ten session program and so that goes, uh, through the year as well, starting in September. Uh, this, last year we had two people go to NACO, uh, well, actually the last couple of years, we've had two people go to NACO. And, um, we had two.
We had two go to Flint Hills Regional Le- Leadership, in the past we had sent one. And we decided it's, uh, a valuable enough program that it would benefit Riley County to send two participants and that was. Uh, Tandy Lins and, uh, Evan McMillan.
On the NACO one, um, two people in the past several years.
Yes.
You know, how, what was the response, it seems to me we had a negative response from one and positive from the other, so what's.
This year we sent Doug Russell and, um, Megan Lewis to this event and both had positive experiences. And I believe Megan talked about it a little bit in her staff report, uh, the month before last.
Oh, okay.
That's what I was gonna say, because before, or last year, we had the people that done it last, I mean, not, not complaining about it, but just. They had come in and let us know.
Yes.
What it was and how it worked for them.
Yeah, and we coordinated that with Megan and we just had her do it in her staff report, but if you'd like a specific presentation from both of them or just, maybe just some, a note on how they. Um, received it, but if they both had positive experiences, both completed the session. And I don't think I heard as much from Evan, but Tandy really, really enjoyed and got a lot out of the. Flint Hills and just, just things that are available in the community and the way that we can connect and combine those.
Yeah, so Evan didn't report to the board on it, I'm just saying, I think if, you know, I think what kind of Greg's point was. If the commission is going to support this and spend this kind of money on it, it'd be good to get a report back directly to the commission from them, rather than just a note via email.
Yeah, yeah, no, absolutely, we hadn't brought anybody in from Flint Hills, but we certainly can, um, that'd be great.
Tandy remembers having to speak, because I asked her to go again, she's like, you talk to them and I don't want to. Public speaking, she's working on it and she's great at it, if you give her a bone, she, she looks, but I found somehow.
Yeah, so we had both, we had one from each.
Bring her in more often.
Directly from commissioners, Tandy.
So we, so we had some one person from each, uh, report to you, but we can have all four or take the other two.
Well, I think we need to hear from each fan of them, yeah. Good nor bad, just, just so we know where we stand.
Sure, okay, yeah, we've got time to do that.
Well, and yet, you know, the, I know the Flint Hills is related directly to, um, regional, um. Things which I think is even more important than national stuff.
Well, and the national isn't on national events or resources, it's on leadership skills specifically. And so we're trying, the idea is part of that succession planning and trying to build our leaders internally. So that they can, you know, move into those next higher positions and really understand administration and leadership and. John, I know you've had a lot of conversations about it when you've gone to NACO. Um, so I, I, they are different purposes, definitely.
And they're working on trying to put cohorts in there that. I don't want to say centered around just county government, but it's centered around. Local government in general and the functions and duties and responsibilities of it.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, Megan absolutely thought it was extremely valuable and, I mean, uh. Doug also, Doug is also not as excited about speaking in public, but I mean, he, he, his feedback was positive, so. I'd be, I'd, we'd be more than happy to coordinate that, but I do think they, they, the feeling overall was that they brought back leadership skills that they could use. So we can, would we, would we like to do that, schedule that and have them come in and talk a little bit? Okay, perfect, we can do that.
So write something like their college admission essay of why they benefited and come give a presentation though. That's the direction I'll give to Tandy, oh, she'll love it, she will love it.
It's quite a difference of price, because NACO is almost two thousand dollars a person, the other, uh, Flint Hills is six hundred. So there's, we'd like to make sure we get them.
Yeah, I know.
Years prior, we've gotten several different scholarships and stuff that have been available through that program to. Reduce the cost and I think we, the very first one was free, because I attended the conference.
Well, you gotta, my memory is that you got a significant discount, but it was specifically, both years, it was specifically because you attended the conference. So there was a discount for having the county send someone to that. Um, yeah, and it is very different, I mean, this, this NACO program is created by Colin Powell and it has, I mean, it has a lot of research and. Um, it's very organized and it is more expensive. Yeah, whereas the, the Flint Hills Leadership is, is really, and you should maybe correct me if I'm wrong, but it's local. Entities that then present, so there's not a cost necessarily to that input information, but they have food, they have travel, so I mean, they.
Well, the program does, like, the sponsorship from all of the participating organizations plus tuition covers the costs. Some, um, organizations like, um, for the Manhattan Riley County Day, the Chamber of Commerce sponsors the lunch. For participants, so there's, there's many different levels of.
Right.
Local inputs that make the program possible, but we'll get all four of the most recent participants together. And talk to you about their experiences and their takeaways and we'll come back before you.
Okay, you don't like one?
Alright, great, thank you.
So just asking for clarification, so you're gonna ask for them to make a motion to support it after that? Or did the commission want to make the motion to support going forward with this next year's selection now?
Think you almost have to. Do it soon, don't we?
We need to do it soon, but we're not.
This is, this was some open, open applications and selections, which, yeah, I think we can go ahead and.
I just wanted to clarify since it was listed.
Yeah, good, I, I assumed we would wait, but yeah, I mean, we, we do, I mean, we need to make a decision soon, so.
You don't feel forced to, but it seems like you're gonna go forward with it, you just want to report.
Well, it wasn't questioning.
Right.
Okay.
Just think that they ought to. They're uncomfortable and they ought to be required to come here and speak.
Yes, no, you have.
When it's working.
Yeah, they prefer to work, do it when it's not working maybe.
Well, I don't know, this, what are these, uh, applications do, do we have time to hear from? Especially on the NACO, maybe the.
This is saying, open applications. We could open applications, but not approve the final thing until we've heard from them.
If I can get a motion.
I'll go ahead and, um, recommend that Human Resources press for applications and the applicant review committee. Recommend sending two employees to the NACO program and two employees to the Flint Hills Regional Leadership Program. For twenty twenty five and total commitment of fifty one hundred and ninety dollars.
I would second that.
Moved and seconded to, uh, requests for applications and selection two employees for NACO. High Performance Leadership Academy and Flint Hills Regional Le- Leadership Program. Uh, in collaboration with department heads, all in favor?
Thank you very much commissioners, we will get that scheduled and get that to you, get the people to you.
Did you ever revise, moving on to the next thing, Vivian, you thought you had a revised.
Oh, yes, pardon, I will get that for you, thank you, be back.
That's next, Vivian.
Oh, okay. I'm thirty. You're on Greg.
Morning commissioners. Just giving you some updates on some of our Master Gardener programs, uh, we were just at the K-State Open House. And beautiful day to be at the K-State Gardens as they are celebrating their hundred and fiftieth, uh, celebration this whole year. But coming up this Saturday, uh, we will be participating in the Sunset Zoo's party for the planet and the birthday. It is on April nineteenth, twelve to four, Master Gardeners will have their typical, uh, information booth. Along with, uh, some plants to hand out for pollinators and butterflies, that's kind of our theme each year. So have a station that, uh, does origami butterflies, if you want to learn how to fold your own paper. Butterfly, that is an option, there's also tattoos, which is a big, big thing, um, they are temporary. We do have some tattoo stations as well. That's this Saturday, Master Gardeners from twelve to four, Sunset Zoo's open their normal hours. But, uh, the special things are going on, uh, in the afternoon. We also, uh, as far as Master Gardeners are being, are at the farmer's market, downtown farmer's market on the last Saturday of the month. So that'll be on April twenty sixth, they're from basically from eight to one-ish, depending on weather conditions in the crowd. And the last thing we're going to be doing, or not necessary, but, uh, one I'll talk about. Is the Flint Hills Festival, which will be on May third, the Master Gardeners will have a booth from ten to five. Flint Hills Festival, our theme's going to be, um, some native plants. And we'll have some native plant seeds that participants can put in a little jiffy pot and take home. And if successful, plant it into their habitat for this, this coming year.
When is that?
The Flint Hills Festival is, um, May third, Blue Earth Plaza area. From ten to five. Free parking, my understanding of parking garage. They, um, on a gardening note, uh. We assigned students to be doing some rain dances for the spring.
Can you start now, please?
See the technique you're gonna show them, wait, 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 wait. We had some overzealous students in the Riley area. Had a little extra rain, but now we need to encourage it again, so I'm empowering the commission.
Well, we needed, we needed demonstration of what we need to do.
Seen it before.
It was several years ago, you know, variations may have come up.
We haven't really changed our technique. It, it's not necessarily always working, but, uh, for those that are not familiar, we encourage the sprinkler dance. And everybody has their way of doing the sprinkler dance.
They've been begging for that for years, it seems like.
Yeah, you need.
It's an annual thing.
You gotta know, you're gonna have to do that when you're.
One of the main things we look for annually.
I don't think we can follow that.
We're not gonna dance, are we, we don't, we aren't part of the dance for this. You have a certificate from, for all your forty nine years of work Riley County. That shares, um, in a, statements, uh, today we recognize and honor someone who has dedicated her entire career. To serving people of Riley County. Lynn Berry started working for the county right out of high school. During the clerk's office, back in the days when we still used paper ballots that had to be printed and folded by hand. Like her cousin Julie Winter, who retired earlier this year, Lynn made a commitment to public service and never looked back. Between the two of them, they have ninety six years of service to the community. Lynn joined the Riley County Extension Office more than forty years ago and has been an essential part of that program ever since. Through her leadership, the Riley County Fair has continued to grow and thrive. And Lynn has taught generations of young people through the four H program, passing down practical skills, confidence and a sense of community. That will last a lifetime. On behalf of grateful community and this board, thank you Lynn for your incredible service, wish you all the best.
Honored, um, I'm not the one that's usually out here in front of everyone. I'm very honored, um, I've enjoyed serving Riley County for all these years. Um, the county clerk's office gave me an opportunity as an eight year old, eighteen. But she gave me the opportunity to be somebody, um, and then, um, because I grew up in four H. When the position came available, I just moved up immediately, um, didn't have to go through a job interview, they just handed me the job and I gave my two week notice. Um, I've never looked back on that, I love extension, I love everything about extension. And I have very mixed emotions about being retired, so, it doesn't feel like I should be old enough, but. Yeah, sixty, seventy, twenty years, you know, anyway, uh, thank you, so very, I appreciate it.
Right, thank you.
Can I get a picture of you two together? And just a reminder, I will be celebrating one at four thirty this Wednesday, four thirty six. Uh, over at the second floor.
Congratulations. I'll be over to say hi.
Yes, I'm so glad, so nice. You know, who cares how those tire e lines.
Yes.
But he has to stay working. So he got it as long as the money, I can tell you that right now. Thank you.
Congratulations, Lynn. That's amazing.
Yeah, I didn't know they were cousins, you know.
You talk about a family.
That gave me that thing.
I just, I didn't.
I haven't been here that long, but we only had paper ballots when I started as well.
You were so right on big cheat.
I still peruse.
You do.
You're, you're in two minutes.
Okay.
Or a minute and a half.
Mr. Tremblay, I'll tell you, my seven-year-old is voting for anything that you're promoting. He heard John came in and he said, Mr. Tremblay?
Oh, gosh.
And he said, then, no, tell me what he's doing. And so Mrs. Tremblay is my teacher.
Oh.
And so then he said, well, I'm not sure if that sounded exactly like him. And I said, oh, you're, you're an expert on Mr. Tremblay.
I stopped by, okay.
Yeah, yeah. So he's, he's all in. He wanted to know all about the details.
I don't know all the details. Tell them what I can.
He sounded very informed on K-Man, so.
Good.
But you have.
This is gonna be much more detailed than K-Man.
Well, probably make a flash for the seven-year-old.
Glad you enjoyed it.
Doctor, give me, I have allergies for the first time in my life.
Welcome to Middle East.
It's not a pleasure.
Allergies or middle age?
Both.
That's real bad for him, Greg.
I, I didn't ask for sympathy. I was letting you know I sound a little funny.
No, that's okay. Me and I was up there too, as in, I'm pro, you know, I'm talking.
Mine, usually I don't hit it bad in the spring, but then they did this year.
I think a lot of mine's been this year. I've noticed the smoke. I think the smoke didn't much trigger mine. I have allergies, but it's been working with smoke this year.
Yeah, go ahead, Jared.
All right, thank you. Well, good morning Commissioners, my name is Jared Tremblay with the Flint Hills MPO. I'll be very brief. I know we have twenty minutes, so I'll just jump right into this here. So this is the Flint Hills EV readiness plan. Want to be clear, we're not promoting or pushing electric vehicles. This is not an actual plan. There's no projects or funding identified in here. Rather, it's to gauge where our region is, you know, today on the topic of EVs. And to help inform some policies and infrastructure that that may be needed if and when electric vehicles become a major factor in our region. So three main types of vehicles, light, medium, heavy, utility, and agriculture. The focus of the plan is light utility vehicles. And it's worth noting that the National Blueprint for Transportation Decarbonization also says the focus nationally is light vehicles. It is not on agriculture, heavy vehicles, at least in the short term. Have to figure out the small stuff first. You don't have to answer this. We've just been asking folks in our public meetings, but have any of you ridden or driven in an electric vehicle?
Ubers in Washington DC, they're pretty popular.
They're, yeah, they're a great deal for Uber and taxi drivers. So there's two types of electric vehicles, plug-in hybrid electric vehicles and then battery electric vehicles. This plan focuses on battery electric vehicles because that's what we all know as electric vehicles. The other ones are a hybrid. There's three types of charging, level one, level two, and level three. Focus here is on level two and level three. Level three is also known as DC fast charging. Level two, you can see typical charge times two to eight hours. Level three is ten to forty minutes. So locations where these are generally, people put level twos in their house, you put them outside offices, hotels. Level three is more of a gas station style charger. Level three is generally for longer trips, and we're gonna get more into that. Demand pricing is a serious thing. You are, if you're an Evergy customer, you're signed up for one of these four plans. I'm signed up for the summer peak time-based plan. It's the most expensive during the summer at peak times from four to eight. You can see it's twenty-four cents a kilowatt hour, but from twelve to six, it's four cents a kilowatt hour. So what that is, is it's telling you, you can use power in the afternoon if you want, but you're gonna pay for it. They're incentivizing you to not use when other people are using with the most power. Now, level three chargers out in the wild, if you were to stop off of I-70 and use a level three charger, those rates are not set. It is market rate. It could be sixty cents a kilowatt hour, or it could be ten cents a kilowatt hour. It is whatever is being generated and being pulled on the grid. You can do it, but you're gonna pay for it. It's live. So demand pricing I just talked about. It's worth noting that demand pricing is very effective. Over eighty percent, some studies show ninety percent of charging is done at night when demand on the grid is low. This is a new source of income. Energy used to just go unused at night. It was being produced, now it's being used. And then the other key thing here is these, these chargers are, have AI in them. They're tied live into the grid. So even if you had, you know, a multi-unit family resident, a multifamily residence with ten electric vehicles all plugged in overnight, it's not like plugging in ten air conditioning units. The AI is there. It knows what each car needs to charge. It knows how long it needs to be filled by, and it's reading the grid, and so it's dispersing that and playing it. So you're not, you're not blowing circuits. But EVs are different. So this is day-to-day driving. This is what, you know, we all know the gas, the gas vehicle model. We wake up on Monday, we fill gas, we go to work, we go home. We don't fill up again until our car's empty, maybe five days later. Electric vehicles day-to-day are not that. You charge it overnight, you wake up, you drive it, you go home, you charge it. You wake up, it's charged. You go to work, you do whatever, you come home, you charge it. For a hundred and twenty years, we've been living the gas station model. Electric vehicles are a cell phone model. You use it during the day, charge it at night, it's ready to go. Longer trips are different. We all know what we do here. EVs are a combination. You leave charged, you go do what you need to do, and if you have to top off, you go to a DC fast charger, gas station style. It's worth noting that ninety-five trips in the United, ninety-five percent of trips or more in the United States are less than a hundred miles, even in Kansas. Sorry about the formatting. When I downloaded it here, it seems to have changed the formatting, but the average vehicle range in two thousand twenty-four of an EV was two hundred and eighty-four miles. Chevy Equinox, doesn't matter if you buy the cheap one LT or the expensive three LT, it's the same. Tesla's up to three hundred and sixty-three. You can see when Tesla hit right here in twenty sixteen. Maintenance is a major issue. EV, according to AAA, last year, twenty twenty-four, one thousand four hundred and fifty-two dollars was the average amount of maintenance per vehicle in the United States. That's tires, oil changes, other maintenance. EVs average thirty percent less cost year to year. The biggest reason of that is because an internal combustion, uh, drivetrain has fourteen hundred components as opposed to two hundred. Also why automobile, automobile manufacturers enjoy them. There's less labor and less cost. This is just a quick run-through. You don't, I don't want to take time for this. We're getting to more important things, but the point is, is that there's less things to go wrong. Tires is something we've heard a lot about. Tires on an electric vehicle do cost more, thirty percent more. Their EVs are heavier. They have to be built for that. EVs have a ton of power. Electric, electric motors are extremely powerful. That's why they're so fast. The other thing is so that all that requires special engineering and maintenance and things of that nature. Not only do they cost more, they only last about thirty thousand miles on average instead of fifty. So if you're to plan out the hundred and fifty thousand mile lifespan of a vehicle in gray, you can see that, okay, my standard gas vehicle, I'd replace my tires at about fifty and a hundred K, and if it's a thousand dollars a pop, I've spent two thousand dollars on tires. And you can see that bright greenish-yellow line, you'd have to replace them four times, and you're talking fifty-two hundred dollars. So tires are more expensive, but when I said EVs are thirty percent less expensive to maintain overall, that includes tires. There's just less things overall that go wrong over the lack of a vehicle. When things do go wrong, it's a big deal. Batteries and so on, but overall, they're less expensive. New vehicle sales. Last year in the United States, or, or not, I'm sorry, last year in the world, there were seventy-eight million new vehicles sold, twenty-two percent electric. The United States accounted for fifteen point nine million, only one point three were electric, eight point two percent. One in twelve vehicles, the United States last year was a bunch of people. Problem is that the world's, the world's dominated by the auto market, by China. Thirty-one million vehicles, thirteen million of which were electric. Our company's international now. Most, a lot of the world is also going this way, and so we're being dragged into it. In Kansas, we sold eighty-eight thousand cars last year. And last year, specifically in Riley County, it was about two percent electric. And as of the year before, when we were under two percent, we already had about two hundred in Ri- in Riley County, one eighty to two hundred that were electric already. Last year, Kansas City was six to seven percent electric. We're the dark line there. The national average is the lighter line. You can see we're behind the national average, but we've been creep, we've started to creep up. But the key here is that, you know, we're not KC, we're not California, we're not China. This plan is to look at where we're at. We want to be ready if and when we do progress to those levels. And also, we want to accommodate people that are coming to our community. We would like to profit off of them if we could, because people are passing through with electric vehicles. Here are our electric vehicle chargers right now in the region. I will note that Junction City has one, a, a new one that just popped up on Washington, and they also installed one at the hospital specifically for a doctor who comes from Kansas City and required an electric vehicle charger. So, like I said, they're right now, they're, they're an expensive item. Um, we don't have that many. We have fourteen stations, twenty plugs, so twenty actual gas pumps, if you will. I want to be clear, I think you agree with this. You're not interested in owning or maintaining electric vehicle chargers. No one we've spoken to has. Again, the idea is to support private business and be ready if and when someone does want to do so. We did some GIS analysis. This is level two, so this would be your more day-to-day charging, or maybe someone comes in for a K-State game. Um, I'll zoom in on the Manhattan area. So what we did is, uh, you were, we broke the city up into many small little areas, and then we aggregated points based on drivers, hotels, offices, and so on. These little blue points, they're hard to see as blue. These are existing chargers, and so those receive negative points. That's why downtown, southern downtown area has less demand than, so obviously the K-State garage and we're saying, and West Loop are where ideally the next round of, of level two chargers will go in. Level three chargers, long distance driving, this is a different, this is a different sort of analysis. Junction City is on I-70. It's an alternative fuel corridor as dictated through the NEVI program, which was part of bill legislation passed by Congress. It requires that there be an E, uh, four EV fast chargers every fifty miles. Right now, there's ones in Abilene, and there's ones at Maple Hill Stop. Even if the Flint Hills Plaza, whatever, at the Alma stop, were to get one, Alma to Abilene is fifty-two miles. It's still mandated by federal law that there be a charging the level three charger installed somewhere on the route. The most logical route, Commissioner Ford, I know we've had this conversation, right now is Junction City. Um, there's services, there's a bunch of requirements that come with it, but within the Riley County area, it's downtown, up at the stadium in K-State. Pretty obvious, we just wanted to run this. This is something we'll run probably annually just to see what changes in twenty-four, or twenty twenty-four, there were ten new chargers added in the Manhattan area. So they're, they're being added. I saw last night, California now has more electric vehicle charging stations than gas stations.
How much is a charging station?
Oh, well, if you're gonna, we'll get to that in a minute. It depends, it depends what level and what type of charging you want to do. Want to talk about demand? Uh, looked at three growth scenarios here, a low, a medium, and a high. The mo- the medium was modeled, that shows in twenty thirty about ten percent of vehicles being electric. It may be aggressive for us still, but it's within reason for a lot of the country. And so modeling that out, what that looked like, use these percentages of pickups and sedans, and okay, the average pickup requires this many kilowatts of kilowatt hours of battery and so on. Eighty-eight percent of the time, vehicles will be charged at home, and public chargers will be used twenty-five percent of the time. So they're showing right now, the analysis showed, okay, we could use about twenty more chargers in the region as of today, but by twenty thirty, you can see how many that is, two hundred and fifteen level two chargers. I don't know if we'll get there. I don't think so. But this is just a high-end scenario. If that happens, if ten percent of vehicles in the region are electric, that equates to about forty-five megawatts of power a day for electric vehicle charging alone. Last year, the number one thing we heard is that EVs will overload the grid and we don't have the power generation. So we had stakeholder groups. And Evergy was the star of the show, obviously. We had the senior manager of electrification. This man leads a team whose entire job is to look at where Evergy is at today as a company. What future demands will be, what's coming offline, what needs to happen to ensure they meet demand. They're the ones that ensure Evergy has power for us going forward. Highlight here is Evergy is incorporating EVs and future demand into their long-term growth. And not only that, he does not foresee any future challenges in meeting the generation and transmission demand for future electric vehicles in our region. This is key, in our region. They expect problems in Kansas City. And we're different. We asked multiple times, point blank, you're telling us we're gonna be okay. Yes, with the caveat that we'll get to. This is Evergy's power production in twenty twenty-four, thirty-four percent coal, thirty percent wind, twenty-six percent natural gas. You can see where we were at fifty-two percent coal and where they're going. But by twenty, twenty thirty-five, sorry about the formatting, I don't know what happened. By twenty thirty-five, they are expected to add net an extra three hundred and sixty megawatts of power generation across their network. For example, just last year, they added four, they're adding, they're currently construction, constructing fourteen hundred megawatts, uh, that combined cycle natural gas.
What's this other non-emitting?
Other non-emitting, so they signed contracts with hydro and different power pools.
Oh.
The other thing is, is, yes.
No, go ahead, finish him.
The other thing being that, that non-emitting also has something inside of it that's basically non-committal. So they are much more sure about their short term, but this twenty years out, they're leaving themselves some room.
Say, that's, that's hope from there on out.
Yeah, so it'll be refined, just like the long-term budget, it'll be refined back. Um, what I.
It's interesting how wind was gonna save the world. It's going down in the projections already. As I drove by a big field back home that, you know, I went to my dad's birthday, and you see all the oil spewing out of the back of those things, because they're stained so bad.
Yep. So it's a percentage overall, so it's not going down, it's just a percentage, and there, so.
But still.
It's, it's not gonna be filling a continuous growth curve. Yeah, exactly. Um. Gosh darn it. Let me just take that out. Okay. So the summary from that, new energy demands related to EV growth are expected to be modest compared to what Evergy's planning in future generation. And we're all concerned about EV generation. In twenty twenty-three, EV charging accounted for half a percent of power in the United States. Meanwhile, data centers accounted for four point four. That four point six is high-end growth. I doubt we get there, but look at data centers. Every time you use ChatGPT, it's ten times the energy as a Google search. So you can have fun with it, but you're costing yourselves and all this money in the long.
We have to do something productive with it instead of making action figures on.
Uh, that, it, it has its value, but that's my point, is what are you doing with it? Um, I, I said earlier that Evergy told us we're gonna be just fine. That does not mean today's situation is just fine for the future. It's going to require investment in upgrades. Absolutely, especially in transmission and distribution. But they, they sent us a bunch of studies that they agree with, that they're looking into. These are done by independent oversight committees, and there's three key points from these studies they sent. Number one, investments put in because of EVs are more than being paid back by charging rates. Number two, these profits have the potential to drive down costs for all electricity customers, not just EV users, because they're selling power at night where they used to not sell it. Now, that's a caveat. We had a commissioner in Potawatomi County ask, how's that possible? These are private corporations. Any profit's gonna go back to the shareholders. And we have the answer from Evergy on that. Basically, there are, the KCC and Oversight Committee set rates, so it's not like it's just straight profit. And third, the investments driven by EV demand are modernizing and updating the grid, something we know needs to happen anyway. So it's forcing the issue that needs to happen, and it's paying for itself. So, so these are some policy and code recommendations, review and update zoning requirements. Haven't met with Amanda, uh, yet, but I know in Manhattan, quite honestly, our codes in Potawatomi County, there were no real um, issues, our way, our codes written, that we just don't legislate as restrictively as many places that are verbal head. Incorporating EV charging parking into standards, this is a key one. So, um, perhaps that one EV space can count for two plus spaces, the idea that instead of the, the developer knows how much parking they need to build for their, their build, you know, for their this business, and maybe instead of forcing them to build a larger parking lot, they could put that money into the charger if they want to. Second recommendation is that every single new parking lot in any reconstruction be designed to be EV-ready, at least ten percent of spaces. That's what's happening at the Hartford. The developer on their own is doing ten percent EV-ready spaces, and they're laying conduit and doing planning for it. Many cities are going to forty or plus, some places doing eighty plus. Because it's a lot less expensive to put conduit in now than to retrofit. The other thing is Evergy needs to be spoken to about all of these projects if you're going to do any EV charging. And then also there are, uh, you know, ADA accessible EV charging standards that are out there, which are on our report if you want to see them. Other one being developed standards for specific housing, curbside installation. This is Aggieville a year and a half ago, this college kid charging his his private vehicle across the sidewalk with an extension cord and plugging it into a private business. That's what we don't want to see. There are pla- right-of-way is a, it's kind of the Wild West. The right-of-way charging is the Wild West, and here you can see there are companies out there that are developing chargers that are out of the way, but within, they're tapping into the existing streetlight infrastructure, so you don't have this other impediment in the right-of-way. Kansas City, we just received this report, but they did their own study, and there's chargers out that they worked with, uh, Evergy and other, others on to kind of see how would this even work in a city application. There's no necessary best practice yet. I've been telling everybody, it's kind of, we're kind, it's like it's nineteen-ten, and instead of us transitioning from the horse to the elec- to the vehicle, we're transitioning from the internal combustion vehicle to the electric, and it's gonna be a long, slow process. It's starting on the coast, Cal- Bay Area's at forty percent, Kansas City's at seven, Manhattan's at two, Wamigo's at basically zero. In Westmoreland, it's not gonna be this tidal wave that's just gonna sweep across all of us. It's gonna be a slow infiltration. One thing you can look at is streamlining permitting processes, um, City Manhattan basically said, no big problems here, they're open. They're gonna treat it like a gas station permit, um, or application, the other idea is, you know, some places do have specific applications, and the idea being if you have a development reco- development review code, okay, Public Works looks at it, Community Development looks at it, Fire looks at it, basically ensuring that, you know, we've talked with Eh- Evergy, all these sorts of things that check this, we're going ahead, something that, uh, make it easier for a business to do if they want it. But if you may not be there, and that, that's fine, these are just recommendations, and then, of course, incorporating EVs into your long-range planning. Ensure that they're, they're talked about in all plans, buildings, parks, parking lots, all these sorts of things. Make sure that it's being thought about, or at least ask the question, have you thought about it? If it's coming, have you thought about it? And then buildings, you know, planning for electrical, a, a big thing they're finding in a lot of places, they're spending a lot of money, because you know, utility rooms were, were built for one size, but if you have to retrofit and add more panels into your, and if you have the capability in the space to even add paneling internally, what's required locally with your transformers and the local lines, um, all these sorts of things. Parking garages, this doesn't involve you as much, that's more of a, uh, it would be, it would be nice to maybe have a point person, we're looking to have again, this isn't an action plan, but we're gonna have maybe, uh, semi-annual or annual meetings, just to update where we're at, see what changes have come along, and if you could have a point person, or maybe someone calls, they could be the person that, that they talk to. Um, we're looking to talk with the Chamber of Commerce, just last week, we were met by Evergy, they have a new Evergy fleet advisory tool. If you've been to Kansas City, every single Amazon vehicle is electric and has been for several years. Commissioner Ford, you talked about taxis and cities, um. There are cities that are looking to switch over, even small ones, I was recently, there's one in Georgia that's very small, and just for the maintenance costs alone, they're, they're switching over. I mentioned multi-unit. Well, that's not a big deal, this is just straight from the report, so you can just get an idea of what it looks like. I did want to mention, I don't know what time it is. Okay, good deal. We all know how to calculate our, how much our car costs to drive a day. If I've got a hundred mile trip and my car gets twenty-five miles a gallon, I need four gallons of gas, and if it's three dollars a gallon, my trip costs twelve dollars, pretty simple stuff. Electric vehicles are not quite so straightforward, and we don't have the practice with them. So we created these cost calculators for you, and if I may, could I get on the internet and show a live ver- live, okay? So we had, we developed a spreadsheet, and I thought that's not good, so. Come down to our website, and just scroll on down, and we'll do, we'll do the Kansas City one first, because we all go to Kansas City regularly, it's kind of a normal trip for us. So the idea here is that is really zoomed in. The idea here is, okay, my current car gets you know, the average vehicle in the United States gets twenty-six point four miles a gallon, so we'll say twenty-six and a half miles a gallon, right now, gas, what is gas even?
Two eighty-four, two eighty-five.
Okay, two ninety-one was the average last year across Kansas, so we'll keep it right where it is, okay, the cost of gas for that Kansas City trip at this, at these miles per gallon is twenty-six point eight-nine, and you can see that it's alive, alive feed, so if your car gets twenty-six miles a gallon, okay. And let's say it is a Jeep Cherokee SUV, so the equivalent would be a Chevy Blazer EV. Let's say I charged it overnight at home, so it's a hundred percent charging, I did it overnight, so it's off-peak. Then that trip, instead of costing twenty-seven dollars and forty cents, would cost thirteen dollars and seventy-five cents in electricity. But let's say I had it only at eighty percent charging, and I had to top off in the afternoon, then it's about equivalent. And so you can come back up, you say, okay, if gas, gas goes to three dollars and five cents in the summer, but I do the trip and I charge at home, so on and so forth, you can see exactly how it plays, so it's just a way to live calculate. The other one we have is a lifetime ownership, and Commissioner, you'd asked about the cost of a charger, so this one includes that. So here it says, okay, this is the idea of, okay, I'm looking to buy a new electric vehicle, what would I, what would I buy, so let's, again, let's do an SUV. We took, you know, average Jeep Cherokee or four runner forty-seven, two fifty, based on the average trim, gets twenty-two point nine miles per gallon, and EV Blazer after, after the credit is forty-one seven, so those are gonna be the comparisons. We run everybody through this, just to give them maintenance. So you can go online today and buy a level two charger for your home for four hundred and fifty to six hundred dollars. And then you pay a few hundred dollars, so a thousand dollars is a high average, but you can do it today. This is for your home one, a public charger is gonna be several, multiple thousand dollars, maybe up to ten thousand dollars for a few of them to be installed, just because they come with they're made for the public, they're not just plugging their wall. A level three charger, the gas station ones, hundreds, so to do like four of them a lot of money, several hundred thousand dollars, what it takes. I say that because what, what's required is that you have, that generally includes upgrading the local transformers grids, laying lots of foundation, a lot of concrete work, because places that are doing it are retrofitting gas stations, so there's a lot involved in it, it's not a cheap option. But again, that's we can get into that too in a few minutes here, so the, I, the idea here is, okay, over to life of the car, I'll do eighty percent home charging, you know, uh, twenty percent peak, and you can see live what this will cost you, like, let's say you did fifty, fifty even, fifty percent of the time you charge at home, and fifty percent of the time you charge when rates are highest on public charging. And let's do two ninety, because that's what the average gas was, uh, last year, you can see in the first year, you're already saving money, and as it continues along year to year, and then, so the idea being, okay, if gas goes down, gas would have to go down to a dollar to before you break even at a hundred and fifty thousand miles. You'd hope to save probably six to eight thousand dollars, so that when you replace those vi- those batteries at a hundred and fifty thousand miles, you're, you're breaking even, but it's just a way to help you see, um, what's out there, or, or see how, how much they cost. You asked about how much they cost, so I talked about NEVI. NEVI basically said, okay, states, here's a bunch of money, you have to, you have to install these chargers, figure out a way, so Kansas D O T, K dot came up with Charge Up Kansas, it's a website. They've had two calls for projects, you can see the green DC fast chargers are, the green are the existing DC fast chargers. I seventy's looking good, I was in Goodland a week and a half ago. I had pulled in there to the twenty-four seven, I saw that there was construction going on, and there were two, there were two EV chargers there, I filled gas in my car. I went in and talked to the clerk just to ask, I said, how much do you see that EV chargers get, she said, well, enough that we're building four more in Goodland, Kansas. So, K dot had this call for project to fund NEVI programs, and they focused on the other alternative fuel corridor on four hundred fifty-four, because there were none in the southern part of the state. Then also on I thirty-five, so NEVI is on hold, but the Emporia one just opened up. But you can see here who's interested in doing this, Casey's, Love's, Sinclair, these are big companies that see the opportunity, and they're taking the money, and they're doing it. Four point six million dollars were awarded across six grants. So you can do the math there. Three quarters of a million dollars, now, the requirements for these is that you have four of them minimum installed, they have to have twenty-four hour wifi, you have to have twenty-four hour bathrooms, you have to be within one driven mile of an alternative fuel corridor, and you have to have food and shopping in the, in nearby, it's, it is quite restrictive, and it's, it's one of those federal regulations that doesn't work real well in Cherokee, you know, down in southeast Kansas, but they were able to find local businesses that were willing to do it, so this is, look for this to update. All of these yellow ones were funded, but again, only the Emporia one opened before funding went on hold last year, or, or last month.
It's a US funding, it's not state.
It's US funding that goes to the state, the state of Kansas does have some funds they're putting in through like, uh, carbon reduction program, which also is federal funding that goes to it, but there's not like a dedicated state money right now, we could talk about state money. Currently, there's House Bill two oh three, that's looking to add, again, the formatting's off, I'm sorry, but nine cents per kilowatt hour for every uh, at every public charging station, currently, electric vehicles don't pay, well, they never will pay gas tax, but they do pay a they do pay a hundred dollar annual fee at registration, which is supposed to cover part of that, it's currently only a hundred dollars. If you drove fifteen thousand two hundred and sixty-nine miles in the state of Kansas exclusively, which is the average that a vehicle in Kansas drives, according to K dot, this is what you'd pay in gas tax last year. Proposal of nine cents a kilowatt hour would raise about ninety-one dollars per electric vehicle. This is important, because as we all know, gas tax has been flat for about twenty years, as vehicles become more and more efficient, I just bought a hybrid last week, my car was two hundred and sixty-five thousand miles, finally died. I bought a hybrid, I'm getting forty-five plus on the road. They're not getting the tax out of me that they did last week when I drove my car, they got thirty-five miles, which is still above the average. So K dot is looking at a road user charge, this is before EVs become a major player in the state, so again, it's kind of the Wild West. These are all the states that have electric vehicle, uh, fees. It's worth noting, California gets all the attention, but Texas and Florida are number two and number three in terms of electric vehicles. Um, there's a lot of them in Texas and Florida as well. That's what I had for you, just wanted to give you an update of, of what came out of the plan, much of it was education and just facts, I've learned so much, I knew nothing really going in. Um, it's been very informative, so we're just looking to keep it going. Updated occasionally, take a look and see where we're at, see if we need to do anything, but again, this is just to be ready if and when it becomes a major player in our region, which is, you could argue it's not today, K-State, I, I mean, I know the city was, has had lots of requests from folks coming in from K, for K-State games, being like where are the charges?
But, one way, and you said it's not the city or the county to put them, but you said they need to be put in parking lots, is private people put them in parking lots?
So, this is a great question, so Evergy has the four over there. The parking lots, I'm thinking like at, just across the street up over here, the private development of the, um, the Strasser Village, so they have a large parking lot out back, or maybe like the Hartford's putting them in, which is coming in there. Um, car dealerships, so it's, it's all sorts, not necessarily on your own city ones, no. That, I, I am not familiar with anywhere, and there, well, I shouldn't say that, there are some places that have contracted like ChargePoint, which is a company that manufactures and runs them to install. It would be similar to how Evergy owns them on the city parking lots in Blue Earth Plaza. But generally, no, I'm talking about private development.
Yeah. Yes, although, like you said, the feds are kicking out big bucks.
Just for the level three, and only in certain, like, no one in Riley County is eligible for it.
You're talking about nineteen, in nineteen ten, did the Fed, did the government pay for gas?
Yes, there was a lot of incentives that have been paid to, for exploration of oil and gas, all sorts of infrastructure over the last hundred years, absolutely. I can get you more specifics if you'd like them, but absolutely, there were incentives to do so at the federal level. Thank you.
Right, thank.
Good information, Jared, thank you.
Oh, one minute, no, I guess it's time. He's late by a few seconds. That'd be not. Have someone check.
Thanks.
Uh, my last point, it's, it's not doing, or not being forced on us at all, it's, it's That's gonna be my good takeaway, it's like, because I was looking, so it's that, it's coming, it's gonna be forced on us, I don't think it's
Good. Vehicles, cars, EVs.
That, I don't know the price difference.
Vehicles are a lot more than that.
Yeah.
And the batteries are
Yeah. Questions on information.
Good morning, Commissioner John Ellerman, Public Works, um, with my monthly project update. Um, first one up here, Kitten Creek Hovert has been completed and open to traffic for a couple of weeks now, so um, that leaves one more of the structures we had planned, um. I don't know what to do, we're still holding up on, oh, property's changing hands, right when we wanted to buy investments. So that's kind of a, wanting to wait till that actually changes hands, and then negotiation with the new property owner. So, um, that's where we're at, and as soon as that happens, we'll be getting stuff out to bid here, bro. Shortly after, um, Marlet Road, we'll have a meeting with the city and finish, um, uh, in the next week or two, to start talk about design and how we what, what we wanna see out of each other, um, when that happens, they were able to put up their traffic counters and count turning movements, um, in between Kimball being shut down and before they shut down the highway, so they had a week in there to do some of that, to squeeze that in. And hopefully that'll help determine whether we need left turn lanes at certain locations.
Do you know when Kimball's getting opened up, or is it?
It's open.
It's open.
They were just shut down for that week or so to put
Yeah, the lights still, are still being programmed and
I'm just glad to hear it's open.
Um, I think Denison is supposed to be open to the south sometime in mid-June, late June, maybe.
It sounds like it's coming soon.
It's like twice as big as the Aggieville side, it's like
Well, there's many lights that are on there, they probably had to put that on there, because they don't think your typical um, the typical light pole would have worked for that.
Yeah.
When, when one Kansas wind blow, the wind, it would probably be laying on the ground.
A lot of different, a lot of lanes there to light it up, so.
Well, on that Marlette, and we've talked about this, um, as far as from Browning to Marlette, um, I've ta- I talked to a few people that live in Tataracs, and they're really worried about that little section, and I don't know if we can put it slowed down.
We can't do anything there.
Yeah, I know, it's a city, yeah, but
Yeah, I can't put up anything there, I know I've had a couple complaint, or one complaint of a semi coming up the road and taking up both lanes. As they were coming the other direction, and then, of course, your speed, so I talked with Brian a little bit, put some in his ear, but I don't, we didn't sign anything.
I was saying, we could get that section slowed down, it might help a lot, so, I don't know, that's just a, we're gonna have a lot of accidents.
We'll see, I mean, I, I don't, as of right now, I don't think there's been as much traffic there as when Kimball was closed, but it's still gonna be busier than normal.
Yeah.
Wasn't it at nine o'clock this morning when I came down? But, a couple, a couple hours during the day, that's when it's gonna be busiest.
Seven forty-five, there's plenty of traffic.
Yeah.
Was there?
Yeah.
I'm just beating it, so I haven't seen any real ad for
It wasn't bad, but there's, there was a lot of cars.
I've been wondering.
I think as people readjust their travel schedules.
Routes to see which way to get in here.
Kimball open, hell.
Yes. It depends on where you're going to, that, whether that's gonna be busy or not.
Where you're coming from and going to.
Traffic signals seem to help, they switch over fairly quickly.
Yeah.
Been a little bit of surprise for me, I know the city has had some requests to keep them there. But that's up to K dot to let us, let that happen or not.
The one on South Charles?
Yeah, making them permanent.
Yeah, my wife thought that was a good idea, because there's always somebody
There's always something there.
Problems up there.
Port House Plaza window project is I wouldn't say underway, but we are having a pre-construction meeting here in another week or so too, um, to start talking about how we can strategically work through windows and then each room, office floor, or, um, TK elevator, I'm still waiting for them to review, finish their review of the contract. Um, we do have a phone call. And what day do we?
Uh, tomorrow, tomorrow.
With their council and our council has been to discuss, um, payments and how that works.
Yeah, about that, one over there in the office building's starting to sound really bad.
It's a vibration from the new motor that's put in, it doesn't, wasn't original motor.
Okay.
So it don't fit right, so it's vibrating, I think the elevator, I'm told, is working okay, and it's a noise we're gonna have to put up with until we do a modernization project. And so we're three, four years, two, three years down the road for that.
I never used that elevator, so, you know, yeah, I would use the stairs in that building.
I'm hopeful of just our discussion tomorrow, and then we'll have that contract sorted out, there's just some clarifications that we want to do.
But this building is not on that contract, so. Not gonna help this build. Yeah. Some of the divisions, parks getting geared up and starting mowing, um, still gonna tie them up. Best be their May job through the summer, um, they did some general park cleanup the last couple of weeks, tree limbs, branches cleaned up. Stumps that they re- with trees they removed, Fair Mines, a couple, one of the other parks. Celebrating and training technicians on spraying or chemicals. That's. David's pretty big on making sure the guys know what to do and how to do it and are doing it correctly. Even getting their spraying license or certification, so. And then we had two weekends of cattle shows, so they spent a little extra time that week after cleaning up stuff from that. Operations crew, I left that one on. They're on their four to ten day, four, four days, ten hour that shifts. They did a parking, not a parking lot, driveway down to Zindale Fire Station. Um, as well as clean ditch. So that was all bored last week and waiting this week to cure out. And then be opened up for them to use. Crews are out patching and shouldering roads from the storm. They're out at others, roads now patched now, getting ready for asphalt or just the summer season. Um, bridge crew are looking at small structures as the same time they're cleaning out debris. That's built up in front of them. Gravel crews hauling rock and grading roads, getting them ready for the magloride, the dust control. That should be starting up here in another month. And cleaning up just their normal. Maintenance on roads to us. Roads need gravel, they all gravel. Next week. We're sending four employees to an MUT CD training, manual. Uniform technical or traffic control devices. I can't say it and it's that big, so. Other things, open positions, purchasing agent, interviews have been had. We've made an offer this morning. We'll find out tomorrow, next day or so if he accepts the job. Building maintenance tech is an offer made. He accepted. Wednesday officially accepted the job, so he will show up here at the end of April. Which is a big plus, a lot of experience. So i- it's gonna hopefully put us right at where we need to be for building maintenance. Traffic control supervisor, that position. I want to re-take it away and make it an operation, assistant operations manager, and I'll be bringing you. That job description even at the same time, making one of the. Traffic control techs, a a crew chief, which is a, not quite a supervisor, but a kind of a, a lead for that division. We have the parks, seasonal parks open. Um, not much activity on that yet, just a five or six applications in the last couple of weeks. And we got a notice the other day of a public works operator. Um, resignation, so I will be coming to asking you to refill that position. My, I hopefully when I bring you the assistant operations manager request, I will have an updated. Idea of what the operations look like and a organizational chart for you to see what the plans are. University Park's about the same where we're at. We're waiting for. Finishing up on plans and we've started writing easements. For where the prop, the line is gonna go, forced main and relocation of the water mine. We are waiting KDHE response on how we can start. Using some of the grant monies that we've been got. We, and we did get approval of. The state revolving loan fund with sixty percent grant or loan forgiveness. EMS headquarters, David's probably been doing that as of the last. Pay estimate number twelve, we are at eighty percent. Or no, that was the thirteen. I just received it from the architect, the approval to start paying their, okay on it. So that's at eighty percent complete. We will have another meeting on. Emergency management remodel over at the old EMS station tomorrow afternoon. Big hang up or talk on that one is storm shelter and how we handle that. We have been, Evan and I reviewed consultants for the sales tax, bridge and covert projects. Basically, we had all the. Consultants we received qualifications from and kind of trying to divide up who gets what bridge or color. Or design and in a couple of weeks, we will have that recommendation to you. RFQs are about ready to go out for. FCRC Health Department and County Attorney, County Courthouse and Community Corrections Studies. I've attended a rural water district, uh, um, water tower meeting, pre-construction conference. Their contractor will begin, I think they're ordering materials here real soon. They will begin on the tank. Standpipe, as they call it, on Wildcat Creek Crew off of, they have a. A a tank down there that they desperate desperately sounds like needs to be replaced before. Rot's out and rust away. Um, and then they'll be up and working up at the public workshop. In May, first of May will be. Evan and Alvin and I will be attending Kansas County Highway Association meeting in Hayes. And then Evan is at not NACC, but NACE, NACE Conference in Schaumburg this week. And of course, budget season, we're working on. Love it. Any questions for me?
Chat with you, but not about your own thing.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sean. Have a good day.
Thanks, Commissioner. Yeah, Mr. Parker, about now.
Commissioners, I'm Brian Parker, Riley County Councilor. Uh, Jake's gonna come up and talk to you about, uh, recent developments with the city, uh, for RHID applications. Uh, all I had was, um, I know that our, um, one of our two very talented lobbyists, uh, Tom Bruno. Said, and I forwarded this email to everybody, uh, that the legislature took no action. On any county, on any, uh, property tax legislation that would adversely affect counties. Um, and so I think, I think that's all that I had on a legislative update. That's, that's it for me. And Jacob, please take it away.
Good morning, Commissioners, Jacob Hanson, Deputy County Counselor. Uh, I handed you guys earlier this morning, uh, that timeline. Um, that's just a proposed timeline that I seen on the city's agenda for tomorrow. Uh, from my understanding is the city is planning on setting the public hearing date tomorrow, which is tentatively May twentieth. Arguably, on that timeline, uh, they put our, uh, response deadline a little farther out than. I think maybe, uh, as dictated by statute. Because it's supposed to be upon the conclusion of the public hearing. There's some, there's some weird ways you could, you could maybe fit. It's supposed to be thirty days after the date of the public hearing itself, or thirty days after they officialize it by ordinance or resolution. Um, I think just for the sake of making sure we don't run past that deadline, we just assume that it's at the end of the hearing itself. Um, so that'll put us at thirty days after May twentieth to make a decision. Um, so I just wanted to bring that up, so you guys are aware. Um, that's when our thirty day window starts.
And what? News was saying is it's just, you know, they presented all three projects to us as being tied together. But there's, the news at least, it's only saying one of those.
Yeah.
Through this time. So we're gonna get new numbers and if the information is all stirred together.
Yeah. It'll be interesting. Definitely want to watch that city, uh, city hearing maybe tomorrow. I know they're gonna do a little bit of a presentation. At least that's what it appears. During that item tomorrow, so maybe we'll get more of an idea. But, um, I, yeah, I know that the only thing that's being put at public hearing potentially would be the frontier management, um, RHID application. I don't, I'm, from my understanding, I don't think there's any other RHID, uh, application at this level.
Presentation does at three different locations.
Yeah, yeah. And so this one, I'm pretty sure it's just, just the frontier management.
Can we contact him after? To have, you know. So we can have a new, I assume we'll get a new presentation by him before, you know, we're supposed to load on it.
I would hope so. I would absolutely hope so and would definitely encourage them if they're watching to, to schedule that. Um, if anything, I can try and reach out and.
Cause I'd gone through a lot of what was first time and. Let's see what the second one's like.
Sure, yeah.
It did say they were, according to news, that's a fifteen year.
Yeah, fifteen year turn. That's what I read.
I still haven't seen anything as far as city goes, as far as doing a traffic study on that road. Street is just gonna be a mess. If they put all those townhouses and houses in there, the way the parking people that park there. Live there, they have an extra car. Around curve that you just straighten it up. So I still haven't seen that.
Well, like I said, I can try to reach out and maybe hopefully talk to them and say, hey, why don't you all come by, come back, you know, we can have a discussion.
I mentioned it then when they were here, but nobody seems to know.
Well, if you have, well, if Commissioners, if you guys have anything individually, you maybe you want specifically addressed, send an email to me what you want. And then I'll be sure to inform them that, hey, these are some topics that you might want to cover.
Well, it's pretty much the city that needs to look at that in addition to the developer.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I certainly would agree, but we may have to do some of that on our own, I guess. All right, I'll be waiting for those emails and then once I get that, I'll order to them.
Thanks, Joe. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Run around.
Imagine that, huh? Imagine that. Think anyone was surprised by that? Thank you.
Yeah, my friend that had back surgery took him forever to get through all the junk to get, to get what was needed.
Staying back, surgery brings back bad memories.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, you know.
Big thing for his is that I told him no golf this year. He.
Amigolfer.
Is a big, you know, retired big golfer and then also no mowing. Yeah, mowing and I didn't know that kind of now that he was one of those guys that. Really made his yard nice. That was a big thing is.
Oh, no, two things that he loves doing most.
Well, what kind of surgery did he do?
Nothing. No, he had some metal plates. He's getting around better than, right afterwards, he couldn't even use a walker. He was barefoot, but now he's down a boost of cane, so. Well, that was the thing. That's what he had. He says, oh, you gotta go to physical therapy. We just had problems before, you know. And he knew that, but they. And to do it this, and they said Medicare requires you to do.
Commissioner, every time I hear about a CAT scan, I'm reminded of a movie from the late nineties. Where one of the characters, it's called Barstey Blues. And it's about, all about a high school football team in West Texas, right? And the starting center comes up, he, he had been having concussions. Right? The starting center comes up for the last big game and he says, I can play. They scanned my cat. And the quarterback, James Vannity, says, oh, you got a CAT scan? He's like, yeah, they scanned my cat. I'm good to go. Billy Bob.
You're, you're next anyway.
Hi, how you doing?
Yeah, I'm always ready for fence views. You know, I like doing different things than our jobs, you know, and so I've always enjoyed going out.
Give me a reason to go out and not be in an office all day.
Yeah, yeah. As long as it's not ninety-six, I'll be okay.
Yeah, well, that I can't promise you that.
It's up to you, your scheduler.
I haven't even looked. I'm, is.
Thursday's like ninety-six. I don't know what Friday's supposed to be, but. And right up your weather, Miss California.
I don't, I don't like ninety-six.
Well, it shouldn't, shouldn't be too bad. The nice thing with this fence view, there's not a lot of, uh. We won't be walking.
Don't got a bunch of walking and hiking to do.
No, it'll be, be able to see pretty much.
I could write a book on fence viewings.
Driving down the road and then it just continuing the road where the road used to.
Yeah. Well, you know, it's funny, I got a, there was a, we're part of, of course, a lift serve, uh, for county council. Uh, across the state, I had one guy ask me a question last week about how he has fence view going on. It's his first one. And, uh, in this case, it was, one of the landowners was building a private, like a privacy fence with wood paneling and everything. And then the other landowner decided, well, I'm actually gonna build a bollard wire fence instead. So then he built that and then the landowner. Privacy fence was like, well, now I can't fix my privacy fence on that other side. So I'm gonna go through, I'm gonna cut each one of your. Right, yeah, that's where all that's at. That's for sure. So he's like, what do I need to do? What is going on? What can I? So like, man, that's for your first one, you, you gotta, gotta good. Well, when the, when the fire season's supposed to be over, the burning season, I should say, around here. When is that done?
When the last match is lit, then there's no.
The worst of it's done.
This is the worst from now until about the beginning of May, you know.
Rest of this month is the heavy, and there's still a few, but like I said, grass is up enough, can't be burned that much.
There's different philosophy. Most people do it early. The old philosophy used to be wait till around just the end of April. First of May for those bad weeds to come up a little bit. And then they get torched. The K-State did studies on it years ago and I'm sure they still constantly do. They really say you can really burn any time of the year and get benefit out of it, you know, and so. All farmers have their own philosophy.
We used to burn in October. Usually when you get kind of that, you'll get that monsoon there usually in late September, early October, and then when as it starts to dry out, boom, torch. And then it kind of stays kind of bare, but. But then spring comes, everything comes up nice and clean and.
Generally, March through April is the largest by far.
Yeah.
But after, yeah. But after, yeah.
Yeah, it's so funny, cause I grew up in, I grew up in Hobart, which is just south of. And I mean, there's plenty of burning, but it, not, not quite, you're just coming out this point, just a little bit more west here and it's, it's already a different, different game.
Especially before Raleigh starts to build, burning off some of their big chunks.
They got their own system and their own.
I'm sure they do. But I was thinking they probably do it to do some sort of, I'm sure some fun exercise out there with, with fire.
This year they don't have quite as many people up on post, so there's good and bad with that too.
Yeah.
And that's, those pictures that you see where show a field burning that has the line of fire going, but it's so neat, but. They can get out of control, so.
Man, and I tell you, they can in a hurry, ours last year. Last year, the year before, it, there's one spot on my hill, you're coming up the top of the hill and. That wind can be right, but it must bounce off the neighbor's hill back behind it and come around and swirl and take it under the other way that. It got out of control and we got it under control, but you're dead by the time you're done, I mean, you are going and. This year it started to go that way again and we, it, we got it well under control quickly, but you weren't moving fast, keep ahead of it and you're not. Try not doing things you shouldn't be doing with fire, but. That wind can change in a hurry, you know, wind currents and they say fire will make its own turbulence and own currents.
Yeah, that's what my, my brother's done volunteer fire up near Mieta for a long time. Some reason we got talking about them this weekend and saying how the fire creates its own. Its own weather or something. What really irritated him was when you get called out at two in the morning, oh, there's fire burning on this field and they go out. The fields were not, you know, some of the trees out there were still burning, but it's burned, I mean, it's not going anywhere and.
That generally a neighbor that saw the smoke or the.
And so, and I'll stand him out there and he said, you know, that made me so mad that he got called out for something that was not a problem.
Yeah, and this year, you know, I, I, after our first burn this year, I said, no longer during the day and by doing it, that wind was too unpredictable. And we had to work so hard to keep it contained, which we did. In the last section we just did this past weekend, it was a, I don't know, five to eight acre area. Up on top of the hill and we waited till the wind was well down and uh, low and it was. So stinking slow, I was up nine, we started like at seven, six and I was up till nine thirty, you know. So it's good and bad, but at least you're not having to chase your tail and it's not as risky though.
He said, actually you want a little bit of breeze, cause it helps, otherwise it burns so slow, but also it can burn some of the good stuff if it burns too slow. A little bit and keep moving, there's a whole, you know, there's a lot of science in that.
And no perfect situation when you're going up against Mother Nature, that's for sure on either end, she's gonna win every time. Some of those fires partially was giving me gray hairs too, a couple of them, I remember one when Blake was young, Darnell and I in Penn.
Oh, last year.
And I thought, oh, we're calling nine-one-one, barely got. I had no water, I was done.
Oh, it's still windy out there.
I think we're gonna have a wind.
Did you, did you try that link yet? Did I say?
I, no.
I don't know whether our pro, ours is probably. Like I said, I did it on my own.
Taxes weren't thrown this year.
Get ya.
Over sixteen hundred bucks.
Haven't received my bad news yet, so I don't know. Son and I have some joint ventures, so mine was held at by him.
But then that last seven days here, you know, but I don't try to wait till the deadline. Yeah, boy, we got that done Thursday afternoon. IRS had their money right before six o'clock.
They weren't doing it right and then there was a big long explanation about what he was trying to do.
What day is the final tax day? Like I forgot to schedule my money to go out on that day.
I haven't checked to see if the statement's clear.
What's that?
Okay. We got a series of fakes and Jacobs.
Gosh, I know. Well, by on the statutory limit.
Eleven, you know, I'm Greg, and there were two brothers that owned it, one of them was Greg. You know, bookkeeper accounting person, her husband was Greg. And we were interviewing for a new project manager and it was one of the applications for Greg, she said, I'm not booking that one. You're not allowed to look at that guy. It was a small, I mean, there was only like.
Just the one on tax.
There's less than ten people there.
Would you, can we add Jacob to that too?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'll move the county commission, including Chairman McKinley, um, Vice Chair Bokey and Commissioner Ford recess into executive session. On potential litigation for purpose of consultation with Brian Parker, county attorney. Uh, and uh, Jacob Hanson, Deputy County uh, Counselor, Attorneys for the Commission. Uh, and Anna Burson, County Appraiser, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship in accession. To the Open Meetings Act with the. Meeting resuming in the County Commission Chamber at ten fifty-five and fifty-five AM.
I'd second that.
Been moved and seconded for the County Commission to recess into executive session for reasons previously stated. Under the Attorney Client Relationship exception to the Kansas Open Meeting Act, call in favor.
Same setup on the next one too, yeah.
Commissioners, the meeting is live?
I'll move that the Board of County Commissioners come out of Executive Session.
I would second that.
And move in second if the Board of County Commissioners come out of Executive Session, all in favor?
Aye. Also move that the record reflect action shall be taken consistent with the consensus reached in Executive Session.
I'd second that.
And move in second that the record reflect action shall be taken consistent with the consensus reached in Executive Session, all in favor?
Aye. I'll move the County Commission, including Chairman McKinley, Vice Chair Hokey, and Commissioner Ford recess into Executive Session on potential litigation for the purpose of consultation with Bryant Parker, County Counselor, and Jacob Hanson Deputy County Counselor, Attorney for the Commission, and Anna Burson County Appraiser, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship, an exception due to Kansas Open Meetings Act and the open meeting to resume in the County Commission Chamber at eleven oh five eight.
Second that.
And then move in second if the County Commission recess into Executive Session for reasons previously stated under the attorney-client relationship, exception to the Kansas Open Meeting Act, all in favor?
Aye.
Are you a balance?
Apparently unofficially.
That's okay.
He's live.
Okay. I'll move that the Board of County Commissioners come out of Executive Session.
I'd second that.
And move in second if the Board of County Commissioners come out of Executive Session, all in favor?
Also move that the record reflect action shall be taken consistent with the consensus reached in Executive Session.
I'd second that.
And move in second that the record reflect action shall be taken consistent with the consensus reached in Executive Session, all in favor?
Aye. And I see stuff about burn, but I don't see the... I see Shannon's staff report. And just open burning regulations, so.
Burning regulations.
Excellent. Board of Commissioners, Russell Stukey. Florida County Fair District Number One. And Commissioner Ford suggested we come in and maybe give a little brief on Harmony Fire and then maybe have a conversation about burn, state statutes, and regulations. So I'll let Doug was the incident commander for the Harmony Road fire that we had a week ago today. Yeah, week ago today. And after I jinxed ourselves that morning.
Yeah. Don't do that again, please. It was his fault.
It was, we blamed him. Actually Jake, and then at lunch Jake called it out, oh, there's a fire up there, just so you know where it's at.
On the burn map.
On the burn map. Uh, so we initially got called to Harmony Road for a out-of-controlled prescribed fire. So Harmony Road is at our basically the farthest northeast corner of the county. So I mean, it's basically in Marshall County, so. There was a lot of fire on the ground, crews. The biggest issue was trying to figure out what's supposed to be burning, what's not supposed to be burning. So from Harmony Road on the west side, clear up to basically Blue Rapids, on the west side of Harmony Road that turns into a Marshall County road was burning, an actively controlled burns. Um, but the fire had actually jumped to the south. Um, so this right here is Harmony Road. And it jumped from um, this fire over in here to the south. And so this is from the south looking north. Right down here is basically the farthest south point pretty close, and our farthest north point was up here. It doesn't look like it, but it was actually two miles from end to end of the fire. Uh, crews made initial attack. We knew initially it was on the riverbed, uh, and we've been saying since the last few years, as soon as it gets on the riverbed, we're gonna go ahead and request state, we're gonna get crews coming, whether we need them or not, we can turn around, but we don't want it to turn into another four or five day fire, we wanna, we're just gonna get, get resources there. So in the end, there was.
And so on that, normally when I called the state as the emergency manager to request resources, and I say we need aircraft, there's a long list that, well, is it threatening homes and et cetera, et cetera? I said it's on the northeast, north end of tunnel again, okay?
So by the time at the peak, when everybody was there, there was sixty-six people, forty apparatus, and then two planes. Um, so that was from Riley County. We had some Blue Rapids Waterville units, uh, Nima Hua, Seneca. And then we had um, one from Kansas Forest Service, two high-end planes, and then the Dickinson County Task Force. Which was sent by the state, and they were, they've got their crews so ready to go that they were ready to leave before the state had the paperwork ready to, hey, you can, you can go ahead and respond. So um, again, this was, this is looking south now. Last year's fire was right over here. All of this. So we've now basically burned everything from Fancy Creek into Blue Rapids, Marshall County, everything in that section has been burnt now over the last few years. So we knew that there was a lot that was gonna be going on, so that's why we went ahead and sent resources pretty early. Uh, this was one of our staging areas, um, this is the second, the next day, so this would've been Tuesday. Parks and Wildlife showed up, um, and they started pushing trees and anything that they could get ahold of. They just started making piles, so this is all leased ground from the, from Corps of Engineers to the state. And so they were there and they were actively working, and, and so we went, we sent crews back on Tuesday just to monitor a few things, but Parks and Wildlife took care of any of our issues, they were there taking care of what they needed to, so. Um, and this is from the far north point. This is one of the big things that Dickinson County Task Force did, we made a fire break. Basically right where I'm standing, and then this is looking south. They cut any tree down that was burning or had any fire, you know, any, any fire or anything in it, they cut it down. Uh, it was probably uh, fifty yards by two hundred yards, they just, they had six chainsaws going and they were just falling trees. Again, for the Parks and Wildlife, they, they pushed all that up and let it finish burning. Needed to happen, it was a lot of dead fall still from the floods, so. Needed to happen, but. Yeah, no damages to anything, any, any homes or anything, there was only one house. And it was protected by defensible space, so this is the only property that was, any house that was threatened. Green grass and defensible space, so it, it took care of itself for the most part, so. Thank our volunteers for all the hard work. Is there anything else you have?
Our neighbors.
And the neighbors that came and helped, yeah.
And you can see here the, some of the differences, you know, this is, uh, I assume wildlife and park ground here.
Yeah, it's all, yep.
Where it's farm ground, and so the corn stubble, and I assume this was corn stubble, right?
Corns and bean, yep.
Yeah, will, will burn, you know, not as rapidly as obviously the heavy standing ground, but the different types of conditions, and we can see how it burned differently. You have any questions about that, Fire Commissioners? And so, uh, to, as the other, um, things we just thought we'd go over is you have the state statutes that, um, pretty much regulate burning in Kansas, and then you have, um, the, our county burn resolution. And uh, you have the, I don't have that on here, the Kansas smoke, or the Flint Hills Smoke Management Plan, and uh, part of the state statutes, uh, to work with the Smoke Management Plan is we don't allow any burning of brush piles. It's the only burning that is allowed in this April is agricultural burns or other burns permitted specifically by K D Energy. And so that's one thing to, that I wanted to get out to the public, you know, brush piles per state statute are not allowed to be burned during the month of April. Only agricultural burns. And that, again, has to do with the Smoke Management Plan. It has to do with air quality in the cities typically to the north and east of the Flint Hills, Omaha, Lincoln, and some of those. They are at the, near the max level of their air, air quality standards by the EPA all year round. And so when we start burning the Flint Hills, that puts them a lot of times over their limits, now it's our fault that they're setting at their max limit every day. But it is, our smoke does contribute to them going over their limits, and so one part of the Smoke Management Plan is to not allow brush piles to be burned in the month of April so that there's that, at least a little bit less smoke, um, than what is getting put up in the air anyway. Uh, the and so the state statutes, you know, state that we can be more restrictive, we just can't be less restrictive. And so the Commission back in nineteen ninety-nine uh, enacted our current burn resolution, which is what's still in effect. And uh, you know, that's what we base our decisions on, you know, as, as your appointed officials to manage the burn resolution, the policy that the County Commission has set. We take several things into account when we make burn or no burn date decisions. You know, the number one thing we look at is the wind. You know, if it's going up above twenty twenty-five, it's probably not gonna be a burn date. But the other things we look at are humidity levels. We look at the weather for the next two or three days, not just today. If it's gonna be hot and dry and really windy tomorrow, even though today might be a fairly decent day to burn, if we know it's gonna be hot and dry, low humidity the next several days, that influences our decision on whether we allow burns today. Other things that influence our decision are what has the uh, call volume for the volunteers been the past two or three days? You know, uh, the other day, was it a week ago Sunday, we broke a few trucks?
Yeah.
We broke a few trucks a week ago Sunday, had a lot of fires. Monday probably would've been an okay day to burn, but we knew all the volunteers had been taxed hard, we had some trucks out of service, and so that goes into our, our evaluation of whether we allow a burn to happen or not, too.
Yeah, and we can shut it off midday, so if we got two or three fires already going on, and we, we don't really have a handle on them, we might shut it off until we get a grasp of, okay, is this gonna be a short fire or a long fire? Um, because we don't want to be in the middle of it, and then, oh, there's another one, because we were letting people still go. And then we don't have any trucks that we can send, we lose a house, we start losing property. And, and there's a lot that goes into that, um, that decision, yeah.
And so, yeah, like Doug said, you know, we may, it may be a perfect day to burn, and we allow burns to go, and if we get two or three scenes going, and we don't have any volunteers or fire trucks left, well, you know, people don't have to go put out their burns that are currently going. But you know, at two o'clock, we may call dispatch and say, don't allow any more burns for right now. And so we just don't allow any new ones to start up. But then if we get a handle on things, we get the trucks, you know, back fueled up and, and filled with water, we may turn it back on at five or six, or just whatever time. Same, same thing is the wind may be blowing hard in the morning and early afternoon, and we may not allow burning during the day, but if the wind dies down and, and things come decent, you know, three, four, five o'clock, and things go good tomorrow, then we'll turn burning back on. So I think, you know, the way we have it is, is really the most flexible and, and most advantageous to everybody, and, and I invited our, our partners from Extension and, and Forestry to come, and if they have anything they would like to add, or you guys have any questions for them, you know, feel free. The reasons, you know, and, oh, the other thing I was gonna mention is, you know, in our office, we get phone calls from both sides. We get, we actually get a lot more phone calls, why are you letting them burn, you're smoking us out of, out of town? They should never burn anything, why are they letting them burn to, we should be able to burn any day we wanna burn? You know, we don't, it probably isn't ten percent here and ten percent here. I figure if we're keeping the seventy, eighty percent in the middle happy, we're probably doing our job, but, but uh, uh, we get calls that. I figure if we're keeping the seventy, eighty percent in the middle happy, we're probably doing our job, but, but, uh, uh, we get calls from both extremes.
And we also, we work with Gary County and Park County a lot, mutual aid and everything, and so.
And coordinate.
And coordinate. So we try to coordinate those days because just, so that way. We're all on the same page. So that way we're, we're kind of all working together still. Um, and one's not letting somebody burn when it's really crazy day and we're, we're all kind of wondering what's going on. We, we try to work. Together. Fort Riley, those guys, they're staffed. That they're protected. They do a lot of their own stuff. Uh, we don't, we go help them, we do some stuff with them, but, but they kind of make their own decisions. And so some of those calls that we get are because Fort Riley's burning. Well, they have a full staff, they have full firefighters, they're, they're protected, they've got big fire breaks. And they've got certain times that they can do stuff. So that's, that's some of ours that we get in Gary County and, and stuff is. Well, why are they burning? Well, we, we have no say over what they do, so.
Well, and I know you had people questioning it. My thoughts were, you've got a lot better weather than anybody, you know, you've got access to, and you send them the feds, but also there's. Like I say, just because it's ne- good right now, this afternoon, it's not going to be, you can't. There's a lot going, it isn't just, eh, I don't want them to burn today.
Yeah, it's not just willy nilly.
No, I know there's, there's a lot, and I've tried to explain that to people, that there's a lot that goes into this. This isn't a random. And I have even thought about the fact that when some of the crews, when you had a big fire and the crews have been.
Yeah.
Cranking out for several days in a row, you need to give them a break.
And, and to, I know we all know this in this room, but just for any public listening. Other than us three, everybody else is a volunteer.
Yeah.
Totally, but they're dropping whatever they're doing, their kid's birthday party or leave, the ones that have permission to leave work or. That are fortunate enough, we have those. Um, they are dropping whatever they're doing to come help us, help the community. And so, you know, that's another big thing that weighs into our, our, um, matrix of deciding whether we allow burns or not.
So like weather wise, we're just using National Weather Service. Just, we look at their weather graph and that's how we're basing our forecast for that day. So it's nothing that's extra that we get that the public doesn't have access to.
No, most people don't know that. You're just going by what the guy on the TV said.
And you can always, and the fortunate thing that we do have that others don't is we can call the National Weather Service and get a spot forecast. Like specific spot forecasts that are a lot more in depth than anybody else can get. So that definitely helps if we need them.
And then just, you know, call volume like Russell was talking. From Friday at, I think it was six fifteen when it started till we ended yesterday. We had fourteen calls over the weekend. Nine of those were for outside fires, two were MBAs. One of those MBAs also resulted in a grass fire. And then we had all the rest for medicals, so. MBA motor vehicle accident. So, um, we were, we were busy this weekend.
Yeah.
Very busy. Uh, we end up, I just did payroll before we got down here and it was, it's the best, it was the most yet. So it, it was a long weekend. Hopefully the end is near. As I think Rich and Jacob were talking earlier about. How long this is gonna keep going for, for the, the springtime. Um, but yeah, so our volunteers did a lot. Were out long hours and they did well.
Do you guys have anything you wanna add? Oh, well, the other thing I was gonna add is, you know, for the general public's information, you know, the reason. That all these prescribed burns happens because it's the natural thing for the, for the prairie. You know, before humans were here, lightning would strike and tens of thousands of acres were burned at the time. And the reason we continue that practice is as ag producers is. To try and keep the prairie as natural as possible, keep the invasive. Uh, species from encroaching on the prairie. Because if we didn't do that and we allowed all the evergreens and everything to grow, then we would just have out of control forest fires, so. And we have miniature out of control forest fires now on those properties that the evergreens have been allowed to. Encroach and grow into enormous size, so. There is a reason for it. Um, it's really the most natural and, and, uh. Environmentally, um. Normal thing for this region of the country.
You said you don't have any authority over Fort Riley, with K State, do they have to?
They, they work with this, uh, we have at times when, you know, out on the Conza in particular. They'll do burns and they, and with research, they do different burns at different times and they'll have. There, a week ago, I think it was, they called and they had researchers in, they had a li- literally a two acre parcel that they were saving just for this. It had farm ground on one side, they had all, they have their own. Fire trucks out there and they were gonna have it surrounded with fire trucks. It wasn't no burn day, but they had researchers in from out of state and they said, Kenley, and I said, yeah, that's fine. Just so happens Patrick out there is one of our battalion chiefs, so.
Yeah.
I have extra faith in him that he knows what he's doing.
And this year specifically, actually, uh, they actually got with. The guys at Conza, so the stuff on the, uh, east side of one seventy-seven, that's, uh, beef stalker unit, there's, uh, equine and some other stuff on that east side. And they got together on Friday and burnt a bu- big chunk on the east side with the Conza guys helping out. Um, they, like Russell said, they have equipment and so they're, they're prepared and ready to go.
Any other questions?
Uh, I was just gonna say with the questions I got or the phone call I got with the concerns, it was centered around. Policies being drafted and made by those that aren't quote unquote elected and. As we see in both cases, there's state statutes that are drafted and, and come up with the Kansas Legislature and. Obviously a resolution that's in place was done by a commission that was elected and standing. I tend to agree with Commissioner McKinley. I'm, I know a lot about weather and meteorology, but. Not enough to plug that in to say we should start a fire or not start a fire. Billy Joel wrote that famous song back in the nineteen. I don't want to continue to write lyrics to attach to it, so, you know, we'll just let the professionals handle that. I think the second concern. Maybe on the back end of that of when there is time or there are those small windows. Available to prescribe burning that maybe our permitting process could be maybe. A little bit more streamlined and maybe easier so that they can actually do those fires when that, when that becomes an opportunity. If that becomes an opportunity, and I think that was the secondary concern that was relayed.
So they can, you can apply for a burn permit anytime and it's one permit that lasts all year. So there's no reason to wait till the last minute to do it. It's not like you have to get your permit within twenty-four, forty hours to fire. You, in December, we send out renewals. Hey, it's time to renew your permit. And anytime after December, you can apply for your permit for the following year. And, uh, uh. So there's no, there's no delay if you have your stuff in order and get it ahead of time. You can get your burn permit weeks before a burn season and you're not waiting on that.
So when they call in, they just say, this is permit number.
Yep, so and so, okay.
So here's the, here it is right here. This is, this is what we will send out. And, and Russell is saying this, we send it, we send it in December. We do get those phone calls last minute. Oh, we want to burn today and it's Friday at four o'clock. Well, we gotta get it, somebody's got to come back to the office or whatever, so.
So we typically don't do that.
Yeah.
Okay. Because, because they could have got it months ahead.
Yes, and it, and this has a number, so this number right here. It will, um, ring through to. Our, our office, our admin, and then that rolls over to dispatch. Yes.
Yeah, being a permit holder, I can attest, I don't know how you can make it any simpler. Their staff sends it to me at the beginning of the year. I click a button, comes up, print it off, send it responded, they send it back to me, I'm approved. And I'm not a high-tech person all by email. I don't, um, you, I don't know how you could get up less clicks. And the calling in process is very easy. Uh, I. I imagine there are people that are concerned with the last minute stuff, but I, as soon as I get mine from your staff. I get it up and going well, months in advance before I need it. So as a user, use it firsthand, it is a very easy process. Well, I got just a minute. Unfortunately, a family member of mine had to use their service. Jake, I can tell you I was very impressed with onsite. Very thoughtful, a very, uh, professionally ran during that time. You did a great job. I'm very impressed.
And so for the first time permit, uh, to, that have get, getting it for the first time, they just go to the county website. Click on the, on the, I think it's.
Go down.
Uh, you just click on the website and. And this, if you come into our office, this is the paper copy you can fill out. So if you're not a computer person, you can't, you can fill it out by paper. But, uh, you know, ninety-five percent of the ones we get, just go to the county website. Uh, search burn permit and, uh, fill out the burn permit electronically. Um, typically you'll get it, you do it early enough in the day on a business day, typically you get it back the same day. And rarely do you not get it back at least the next business day.
Even at the peak, even at the peak times, like as long as you've had a permit before.
Yeah.
It, it's just, uh, we, we just transfer it over, retype it up and it gets sent out within, you can do it within a minute or two. Um, so it's, it's very, we, we've tried to streamline it for that reason.
Yeah, you can't, you can't get it on Saturday or Sunday or after five.
Right.
Well, or afternoon on Fridays.
Well, and we had nine come in over the weekend. Nine applications and Lori had already taken care of those this morning prior to her earlier.
Yeah.
With you guys. We all get the emails, we all get notified of them. And so wherever, we try to get them back out because we want people to burn. We know it's required and we know the necessity of it and. And like, cause like I said, the project's right. No, if we don't ever burn, the fuels just build and build and build and then when it does burn, because it will eventually. Then it's out of control.
The light is a perfect example of.
Right, yeah.
Uh, so any questions for us or Extension or Forestry Service?
We had one come, hadn't noticed before, but. You get the wrong list.
These two guys, but even the forestry guy.
And so, uh, if there's anybody out there that's thought about volunteering, don't hesitate to go to the county website, uh, click on, uh. Riley County Fire District Number One and you can apply to be a volunteer on our website. We'd love to have you.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks. Oh, and, and the other person that was quite valuable, not only last Monday, but constantly for us is Vivian. Vivian does a lot of stuff for the fire district, whether that's. Uh, uh, news releases like you saw from the Harmony Road Fire, uh, on that Monday, she went up. And took some, uh, wa- water up for us, drinking water. And then, uh, got in Doug's truck with him to help him take notes and be a scribe. While he's talking on three different radios and talking, getting phone calls and texts. She's helping him take notes and keep track of, yeah, you need to call this person back until we really wanna thank Vivian for all she does for us because, um. We would not be able to do what we do without her.
Well. Well, we're the county commissioners, including Chairman McKinley, Vice Chair Bokey and Commissioner Ford. But Brian Parker, County Counselor, attorney for the commission recessed into executive session. On a performance matter of non-elected personnel, an exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act. For the purpose of discussing the work conduct of an employee and to protect the privacy of the employee. The open meeting to resume the county commission chamber at twelve P M.
Let's start with that.
And moved in second, county commission to recess into executive session. For the reasons previously stated under the attorney client relationship, exception to the Kansas Open Meeting Act. All in favor?
I agree.
Okay, I'll go ahead and move the Board of County Commissioners to now to Executive Session.
I would second that.
Been moved and seconded for the Board of County Commissioners to now to Executive Session, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. And I'll move that the record reflect no binding action was taken during the executive session.
I would second that.
The new and second record reflect no binding actions taken during the executive session, all in favor?
Aye.
Now, we had moved at the County Commissioners, including Chairman McKinley, Vice Sheriff Oakley, Commissioner Ford with Bryant Parker, County Counselor, attorney for the Commission recessed into executive session on a performance matter of non-elected personnel, an exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act for the purpose of discussing the work conduct of an employee and to protect the privacy of the employee, the open meeting to resume in the Commission chamber at 12:20.
Twenty.
Twenty, yeah.
I would second that.
The new and seconded for the County Commission to recess any executive session for reasons previously stated under the performance matter of non-elected personnel, exception to the Kansas Open Meeting Act, all in favor?
Aye.
You're all set?
Okay. I had moved that the Board of County Commissioners come out of Executive Session.
I would second that.
The new and, excuse me, the move and second of the Board come out of Executive Session, all in favor?
Okay. Also moved that the record reflect action shall be taken consistent with the consensus reached in Executive Session.
I would second that.
The new and seconded record reflect action should be taken consistent with the consensus reached in Executive Session, all in favor?
Aye.
Well, it's been Monday, so I don't, I don't actually have anything else.
I don't either. I would, I would make a motion to adjourn the April 14th meeting of the Board of Raleigh County Commissioners.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded to adjourn the-